Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody to our regular city council meeting on January the 8th, 2023, 2024. Here at City Hall at 80 South Superior Street in Cambridge, Idaho. We'd like to begin with the pledge of allegiance and ask if Nan would lead us in that, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, no, you should have.
I make a motion except to approve the agenda in minutes of a regular meeting, December 11th, and approve with payments of the bill.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, in our last election, we had a councilman position that was not applied for. And at this time, I would like to appoint Levi Harrison to fill that seat for a two-year term.
Can I second something Mayor does?
Well, now the council needs to vote on it and approve his nomination, his appointment.
So I appointed, yeah, I appointed, so. I need the approval of the council in the form of a motion.
I make a motion to appoint Levi Harrison to be vacant to the council seat.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
See, it wasn't, it wasn't worth it.
Well, it's a pretty short vacation.
Pretty short vacation.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Snowing?
Okay, we need to subscribe the oath of office to Delray Platt and then to Levi Harrison.
Mayor, would you like to do it? I've sworn you in before you can do it. Yeah, the mayors haven't wanted to, but I'll give you a chance to do it.
You're good.
He's already up there.
I guess if I would have looked at the swearing-in part and had a little verbiage to go with it, I would... Oh, you're gonna do great.
So Delray and Levi would like to come over here.
This evidence.
So if you raise your right hand and repeat after me, I, in your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of councillor of the city of Cambridge according to the best of my ability.
Only thing is, now in two years, you have three of them. Be all whack. That's the way it was, too. They had three, four years and...
Geez, thanks, Mark.
You're welcome. Love you, man. Okay, at this time, we need to elect a new... Well, we need to elect a president of the council, so I'll be entertaining motions for that or nominees for that.
Hi, nominee Jean, continuing.
It's been moved in second, and that Jean Newman be the president of the council of the city of Cambridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, President Newman.
He didn't give me a chance then.
Gotta speak up quick. Okay, looks like HECO Engineers has all kinds of information for us tonight.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you.
There are two items today for the staff report. They are on page number eight and nine. The first one, item 34, for the wastewater system. HECO submitted the fiscal year '25 clean water LIL application for city review today, January 8th. And the second item is on the water system, item 36, page 9. HECO submitted the draft fiscal year '25 drinking water loan application on last Friday, January 5th. And that is all I have for the staff report for this month.
We're all piled up, then. Okay, a lot more fun stuff to talk about. Any questions for Robert? At this time? Take that as a no. We'll move on to item number six, approve water main replacement on Commercial Street.
Okay, you got it in your packet. I got just this short little write-up on the water main that runs from Howler to Salubria on Commercial Street. It's one of the oldest outdated ones we have in town. It goes from two inch down to inch and a half, down to three quarter, galvanized iron pipe, all that fun old stuff. With the city getting the grant to do Commercial Street, it's highly advisable to replace this water main now before we pavement, so we don't have to rip up the new asphalt and have it look like Central. I got a quote from Warrington's on labor only. They didn't have a problem with us supplying all the parts, which the main, the big-ticket items are the eight-inch C900 water main that's 420 feet, the gate valve for the fire hydrant, and then the fire hydrant, and some... Those are the big-ticket items. Most of the other stuff is stuff I have in stock, like the service saddles and the taps and those kinds of things. Their estimate came in at $45,555. And on the front page that you have, gives a breakdown of the estimated costs for the big-ticket items and then a padded miscellaneous parts item area for any joint restraints and things like that, the line and the hydrant when it goes in.
So that'll be solid eight-inch the whole way, then?
Yeah. And that, now that, so that's how it's designed, so it was designed as eight-inch in the PER for the arsenic removal project, which, you know, that was the one that had that, all the mains in there. From Central to Howler on Commercial, it's six-inch already. And then at that valve cluster there at Howler, it goes from six-inch, then would go to eight-inch, so there would just be a reducing, a reducer to go from six to eight-inch there.
Basically, planning for the future.
Planning for the future, yeah, and, and the hydrant there at the end. We don't have any fire hydrants on Salubria.
So what I'd like to talk about money.
Yeah, I just, the only other question I had, Warrington is the, is their, I guess we approached them?
Yeah, I asked them to get me a bid, just on what it would take to do that.
So we don't have a reference for anyone else that might compete against them?
Well, Sandra and I had talked about it, and I, a couple other ones that I looked up, they don't have their public works licenses, so they couldn't send it to them. One other one was, was it Anderson?
Something like that.
Anderson, I think it was Anderson Excavation out of Ontario. I don't know anything about them. I mean, their reviews seemed fairly decent. Wasn't, it's kind of a process just to get a bid. And I don't know, you know, I know Warrington's is, you know, they've been up here and they're... Well, I don't know that anybody, you know, another contractor would let us supply the parts.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask, but...
They would want to do the whole job.
Yeah. Which puts us over the $50,000 threshold to go out to procurement, so we'd have to send it to three and take the lowest bid, no matter what.
And another thing is, Warrington did the sewer project, so they're aware of where everything is and how the sewer project was done to be able to do the water around that a little bit easier, too. But we could look at others if there's, if you want to.
If you guys have ideas on...
I'm just, just kicking them around.
One of the, one who wanted to do this project.
Before we pay commercial?
So like, right away?
As soon as we can, so.
We're not paying commercial till next summer.
Nope, this summer, hopefully.
That's what I'm saying, this, next summer.
So hopefully, this can be done in the spring, as soon as the snow's gone and things are able to be dug up.
Warrington's told me, weather-dependent, it'd be about two weeks, start to finish with, you know, and that includes flushing the new line and, and construction samples, making sure everything's okay before we hook in.
So as far as money, we know our water fund's pretty tight, but this is just a piece of the town that's never gotten done, and it's really old stuff. And we just hate to see the street torn up again after we get a million and a half dollars to fix it. So this is my, as far as looking at the funds, I think we can handle it that, hopefully, if we don't have too many other problems with the system, that we can use 15,000 out of water repair and maintenance, 15,000 out of miscellaneous, and 37,000 out of capital projects. So it probably will show us in the negative next year, too, just from that project, because our income and expenses will be different, because we're taking so much out of capital projects. But that's what capital projects money is there for, too.
We just about have to have it done, because something happens, you don't want to dig up a million-dollar street.
Do whatever you want. Speak your mind. But they've got to have that...
They have to have a public works license to work for the city.
So if anybody's got that public work license, we'd love to hear from them. And then if they'll, I mean, the, the pivot point here is that we want to provide our own parts. So we just want to bid for them to dig and install. And so if you know of some people, that would be awesome. I mean, I would like to think I knew of somebody, but I don't.
Yeah, and when I were, looked up online, the only one that I came across that looked like they had experience in what we were doing was the Anderson one in Ontario.
Yeah. So...
Well, I've already been asked about the road project, someone wanting to do it. I might not know when I went out to bid, or...
We haven't got the work yet.
We're just waiting on the state right now.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but if he would, that's, he does the same kind of work, so if he could do it all in one swipe and...
Yeah, if, if you know somebody who's interested, they need to get ahold of us.
Yeah, but it might not be all in one swipe, because the road project's big enough, it'll be the official bidding process.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, he might want to do it all. I mean, if the, if the numbers are there.
Bid on both of them, is what you're saying, yeah?
I mean, yeah, you can...
We're up for it.
But we'll probably have to know on this before we go out for bids, possibly, on the other. If you have someone that's interested and they have a public works license, have them call us.
You can just have them give me a call or give me their information.
I'll ask him if he's interested.
So with that hydrant being, it's a six-inch hydrant. And I don't know the difference between the pipe price, the eight-inch pipe versus a six-inch pipe. Is that significant or not significant, or is it one of those things you just overlook because the price is so insignificant, you'd just as well put the eight-inch out there in, in the event of the future?
I, I believe that's how it was designed, why it was designed with eight-inch. I don't think, I don't know for sure on the price, but I would think the same thing is negligible on the difference in price.
Yeah. I mean, because there are some things, you just spend the extra money, because it's silly not to. Seems like when we used to buy school buses. You can buy a short one, or you can buy a long one, and the price is so insignificant, you'd just as well buy a long one, because you can use it all the time.
Yeah.
And a short one, you're restricting yourself, you know, so we'd always, well, when I was doing it, we always strived to buy full-size buses instead of shorties. I mean, shorties are great, but...
Boy, he did get the big bus in school. But the big bus.
Why didn't?
What happened to that thing?
Oh, I don't know. It started burning oil real bad. So anyway, yeah, if you, if we're aware of somebody who can do this, man, let them get ahold of us, and we'd love, there's nothing better than competition.
Yeah.
We'll have to have it by next meeting, anyway.
Because we'll be putting bids out for that road.
I'll just...
Well, I guess you'll have to tell us whether, you know, we're asking for approval for the amount we're kind of giving you tonight, you could raise it up, or if you want to see the, the stuff that, you know, that comes in again to, to approve. Because this isn't one that's through procurement, that requires through bids and the council to take the lowest bid, or any of the, the other higher bidding procedures.
We're just, yeah.
It's just a project.
Yeah, we're just familiar with Warrington and the work, they've spent a lot of time in our town and...
But that doesn't mean we can't, you know, we could approve the project up until, you know, maybe you want to round it to 70,000 to be a little bit safe or something.
Make a motion to approve the project pending.
What's pending?
What guy calls in, you know what, price-wise.
Well, that would just be for administration to figure out what...
This is a water main line, eight-inch water main line?
Yeah, it's an eight-inch water main.
420 feet.
Yeah, it's actually 410 feet-ish, but the pipe comes in 20-foot sticks, so.
How many connections are on that one?
There's six connections total.
I have a question. You might want to contact DEQ if there's any other requirements other than...
There shouldn't be, because we're just replacing a bad water main, it's just maintenance and repairs.
It's ductile iron, you say?
It's galvanized iron.
So it's probably half-eaten away, anyway.
Just in case there is something you think...
You might just want to contact DQ if there's any other requirements from DEQ.
Just to be safe.
Or sanitizing anything, but they might want to see.
He said, yeah, he'd be interested in doing it, so.
This could be on the safe side.
Oh, you just text him?
So maybe you want to, does the council want to control it for next month, then? Do you want to send, us to send one to Anderson's, too? And we'll just send the three bid, the three...
Yeah, council, is that what you'd like to see? Two more bids? Yes, yes, Delray, would you like to see two more bids?
Yeah, I think it'd be, I think it'd be worth a while.
Okay, just let him know that we want to provide all the parts, and we just want him to dig the hole and do the installation.
Just have him call you, Corey?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so then...
I made that motion.
I made a motion just to approve the project, okay.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Is that just the project or the two more bids?
Just the project, waiting for the two more bids.
Yeah.
What's your phone number, Corey?
Well, we don't want it any higher, I don't think. Because we know we can do it for 66.8. So if they can come in a better price, that's what we're looking for.
We're saying, we're kind of at a disadvantage this way, we really shouldn't be putting that out, so the council be careful with that. Everyone else here, please?
I just sent them the description.
Yeah, keep the price to yourself. Okay, so that being, we did the action, then. So we've approved, approved the project, withholding on two more bids. Are we good?
Yeah. It'll work.
Okay, item seven, approve fiscal year '25 drinking water loan LIL application for well number one rehab project.
I'll make a motion to approve fiscal year '25 drinking water loan LIL application for well number one rehab project.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
One quick question, what is the difference between drinking water and clean water?
Drinking water is what we, it's potable water. Clean water is for wastewater and keeping the groundwater, surface water, clean after, after we discharge.
So wastewater's not very clean, is it?
No.
Why you call it cleaning?
Ask the state, that's what they call it.
Okay. Big difference.
It has to do with the Clean Water Act.
Later down the agenda, we'll talk about the clean water. It'll be the wastewater project.
It's clean, but really not. You can see through it, how about that?
But you don't want to drink it.
Okay. Okay, item eight, approve audit fiscal year 2023 West CPAs. Everybody read through the front cover page, or do we want to read it, or what do we want to do, Sandra?
There's just a couple things I'd like to highlight.
Okay.
The financial performance, the general fund had an increase of 19,625, and the museum had a decrease of 487 due to the roof improvements. You know, so that's just income versus expenses and stuff. So both of those funds, he says, continue to have healthy reserves. The proprietary funds, the, um, the water fund had a loss of 19,159, and the sewer fund had a larger-than-normal decrease or loss of 112,341. And some of that's due to the reimbursement of the grant in the following year, but that's still a real minor part of it. I don't know the exact number, but I'm thinking around $8,000, so the losses are also, you know, have depreciation expense in them. Uh, he said, "In the past, both funds still generated positive cash flow, but this year, only the water fund did, and it was quite small, at $1,039." And the sewer fund generated a negative cash flow of 41,759. So he recommends the city carefully monitor these two funds going forward to ensure the rates are commensurate with the costs of providing the services. And I told him, you know, we did raise it 5% in October, and he was glad to hear that. He hopes that, you know, you continue looking at it regularly and regularly have a decrease, because we're going into cash now.
So we've done that two years in a row now, right? We've, so...
But inflation two years ago was almost 11%, so we didn't keep up with inflation at 5%. You know, this year, it was a little less, but...
But we're still behind.
Yeah.
Part of that decrease, am I thinking wrong, or is part of that like all of our pump replacements we had this year, did that, is that played into the cash? That's a portion of that, to the tune of, how much did we spend on pumps?
$24,000.
Yeah, $4,000 bucks on pumps.
But we usually have, you know, we, we have something in there for, you know, sewer repair and maintenance and things like that, you know, budgeted in and stuff, too, but... Anyway, so both, you know, and those funds are required by law to pay for themselves, like, we can't use other city funds to supplement them. The fees that are charged have to pay for the systems. The other thing I wanted to know is, in your audit, oh, and if you want to see those numbers that he referenced, you know, on page eight and page 11, you can see those, the third number from the bottom. But on page 19, I wanted to bring to attention the long-term liabilities, just so you kind of review where you're at as far as the bonds that we have outstanding. We have one water bond that's outstanding, the balance is $275,513, and it'll be paid off in 2035. And we have a sewer bond that goes to 2055 of 447,730. And we have another sewer bond that goes through 2056 of 261,308. So on those two proprietary funds, there's almost a million dollars outstanding. And I especially wanted to bring that to your attention when you think about one of these other items that's coming up, yeah, the next one, on our wastewater treatment plan, because it looks like we might not have any options, and we're talking about the cheapest option being over five-and-a-half million dollars. So this is what you're paying on right now as far as debt, and it's hard for people to pay on that right now. And with, between water and sewer, if we took out the water, you're still like 750,000, almost. You know, just for the sewers, so. A little bit less now, 725.
So next year, we're going to propose that everybody dig an outhouse, because we're discontinuing the sewer.
And before we do that, we have to change our ordinance.
So, I don't know, does anyone have any questions on the audit? Uh, this was his year, he usually tries to come every other year, he already had a commitment for another city tonight. If you want him to come, he'll come, but basically, it's the same news as last year and the year before, the numbers are just worse.
I don't think he wants to do this.
So, it was 11% last year, and we went up five, so we were down six. And what was inflation rate this year?
Well, I think it finally evened out at the end, closer to four or something. So we're, you know...
We're 10, so we're, it's like we're two years behind.
I mean, that's just inflation on cost of products and stuff for us, that's not on the projects we have to do, or...
Well, yeah, I get that, but I'm just trying to figure out how we can shore up that sewer fund, what it would actually take to...
Well, and when I first started working, uh, we weren't meeting depreciation, and we, I worked real hard to try to get things so we could cover depreciation and, you know, do a sewer fund, you know, it's kind of scary we can't cover any depreciation again. I mean, that gets you further and further behind. I know Corey went to a training in the city of Genesee and stuff. You know, they haven't been proactive like we've been, they've been more, at this time, they're being reactive, they have no choices, and their base water and sewer... at this time, they're being reactive, they have no choices, and their base water and sewer rate together, the base rate is like two hundred and thirty five dollars. Is that right, Corey?
Yep.
That's the base rate, because they've got to do things, they don't have a choice, and they've waited this long, and the cost of things are just crazy. They've had to do, you know, they're a small town, they had to do a twenty five million dollar project.
Between water and wastewater, there are almost twenty five million dollars. But with D E Q's principal forgiveness and everything, they're only on the hook for six million and some change. But that's still.
That's about the project we've got to do.
Yeah, that's bumped their rates up that much. They're the ones that ran out of water a couple of years ago.
Any questions on the audit? Okay, move on to item nine.
I need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion to approve the audit.
Here's the audit fiscal year twenty twenty three.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, wastewater treatment plant permit and D E Q fiscal year twenty five letter of intent for W W T P solution grant. This is where Robert's supposed to have all kinds of good information for us. He's going to be like Santa Claus.
Good evening, council. So, the state issued a letter on October twenty eighth based on the city's response to the recent updated permit, I think it was request on September twenty seventh of this year for permit modifications. Mainly those goals were for the total ammonia compliance schedule and the I N I compliance schedule. Those were shifted ahead last time, the I N I was on September first of twenty twenty second, now it's on September first of twenty twenty four for the I N I. And for the total ammonia compliance schedule, they gave us two options, options A and B for that. A is a stricter, more, not stricter, more shorter compliance schedule, fees a little bit more lengthier by a couple, by half a year. There's still, those are the only options that D E Q gave. Does the council have that?
Yeah.
Yeah. The reason that D E Q changed that was because during the public comment period, somebody made a comment to the effect of not pushing it out so far and causing more harm to the aquatic life, which, I have my own opinions on that, but I'm not the state.
From what we heard, it was the Idaho Conservation League and the advocates of the West that were the only one commenter.
I guess we just need to make a donation to them then, huh?
We all are aware that they're the ones that sent that nasty letter back in twenty nineteen to the city.
Yeah.
And we're still complying with their requirements, aren't we?
Dust kickers.
So, based on that compliance schedule, we have talked with D E Q, permit rider and other folks at D E Q. The city is saying that there are only two options, the B, the more lengthier option for the city to try and get funding and meet those ammonia limits and everything, the whole package through September of twenty twenty nine. That they want the city to benefit the reading compliance for total ammonia.
What do you mean by lengthy? Is it gives us an extra year?
An extra, yeah.
Yeah, which is not a whole, I mean, it's more like an extra three to five months, because that's about all I discharge in a year, so.
Option A is almost impossible to meet, so we discussed that with D E Q. There's no way you guys are going, the city's going to meet option A, so option B is the only one that is feasible. And based on that, Andy and I were thinking, well, let's get that L O I process going in case the city doesn't want to make any modifications in the sewer contract for that. For option B, they have a P R due beginning the first of next year, followed by after the plant suspects, the month of next year. And even if the city doesn't get any funding this cycle, at least the city can demonstrate to D E Q that the city's doing something about it to meet that, and if the city doesn't get any funding, hopefully that extends, but without that, we just don't see how all stack can be flexed out without the city getting violations for not meeting those compliance schedules or new permits. The new permit, we don't know when it's going to be effective, but it soon will.
And this is just a letter of interest. The application will come after the letter of interest. And our last sewer project, we did not take any funding from D E Q because they gave us very little grant and basically gave us a loan, and the loan amount was more than what we could get from USDA. So last sewer funding was mainly by USDA, and we had an Idaho Department of Commerce grant. And so I would think it's a good idea just to even see what D E Q, you know, has to offer or let us apply just to, on that road. Because my personal opinion is, we're probably going to be looking at, kind of like the last sewer project, you know, after we get that, after we try to get all these funds in place, then we got to pass a bond. Well, our bond didn't pass last time. People are still struggling, and I don't see too much chance of a bond passing again. So then we have all of that process that we're in violation with to possibly be like council is right now. Council just went to judicial confirmation. I mean, that's just kind of what I'm foreseeing, so I think it'd be good to at least show them that we're trying to be proactive and at least putting a letter of interest out there. Because all of that process takes a long time.
The real frustrating part of it is, to me, is most cities discharge three hundred and sixty five days a year. And so they have a problem, and they have a real problem because they discharge all the time. We discharge three to five months a year. You know, and the rest of the time, we're not even discharging into the river, you know, so, but it doesn't matter. They throw us into a class with everybody else. Because we discharge, period, we're just like every other city, even though we don't discharge three sixty five.
Well, we discharge into Rush Creek before it gets to the river, so it's not straight into the river either.
So, we were just trying to figure out things that we could do possibly to lower our ammonia level. Corey's going to check on if there's, I don't know, maybe, you know, Robert, if there's any chemicals that we could that we could put in our pre ponds before we discharge or anything.
Before it comes into the F, before it comes into the wastewater treatment plant to reduce the amount of ammonia. I mean, I've, you know, I've seen chemicals in the, in the supply books and everything, it says, oh, yeah, reduce your ammonia, this, that, and the other, but I'm not going to, you know, shoot at the hip with a shotgun on something like that.
We were just going to try to get a hold of a city that may do that and may know how it works, and if it works, if it's worth trying. So when we discharge again, if our ammonia levels are down where they need to be, that would be awesome.
Yeah. Ammonia is temperature dependent, so typically in the colder months is when you see those high rises. I know D E Q's, where there was exceedances in twenty twenty and twenty twenty two in the colder months of the year. I don't know how, I don't know how twenty twenty three was, we didn't get those.
Yeah, I haven't looked at those ones yet, but, I mean, I was, in twenty two, it was point three milligrams per liter over for the monthly average. And that was the only one that was over, and that's the only one that's over, is monthly average loading, so.
So, we're actively trying to figure out a way that we could do that before somebody makes us spend five point five million dollars.
Yeah, we could take a look at that, at what you just mentioned, if there's any chemicals. I'm not aware. I talked to Andy, if he's aware of anything that's cost effective, that can consistently, consistently meet the permit limit.
Yeah, I mean, I think the big plus for us is that we don't discharge every day. And so it's not like it's going to be an ongoing chemical injection every day, all year long. I mean, we're going to inject it for a month here, a month here, a month down here, and so it would, I think in the long run, it would make it more cost effective for us because we don't discharge all the time. So, and then we just continue, pray for global warming, warming, because that makes it evaporate.
Yeah, but we can't, we can't get too hot with our effluent temperature because then we won't meet our effluent temperature limit.
And we'll be putting dry ice into the ponds. Anyway, it just, it's just frustrating because it's like a catch twenty two. You can't win no matter what you do, almost. It's like they're going to make you spend, no matter what, and that's why I say we all need to start digging outhouses.
So one thing on the L O I, you have down twenty years, the length of loan that's preferable. I'd like to suggest thirty. You know, our other sewer ones, we had to go out thirty, and for, you know, we got seventy five percent funded, which was totally unheard of, basically, when we did our other sewer project. I mean, if we got fifty percent of that five and a half million dollars funded, we'd probably be super lucky nowadays, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that would be super lucky. So, we're talking about a significant amount of money, so I would suggest we probably would have to look at, look at thirty years and not twenty, but that's up to you.
The only problem, I mean, I totally understand what you're saying, extend the length of time so it's more affordable. But the problem is, all these projects have a twenty year life.
Yeah.
You know, so they have a twenty year life, and we owe, we still owe ten years on a project that's burnt out.
We only got five years. Three years on the last wastewater project.
Yeah.
I had pumps in North Central twice.
But, I mean, the project as a whole, you know, is what I'm saying. I understand the maintenance and things, but I mean, anytime we do a well project, I mean, those are twenty year life expectancy projects, and we string our financing out to thirty years. I don't know, it just doesn't add up to me, I mean, if you knew you were going to have to throw your car away in five years, you wouldn't get an eight year loan on it.
Are you sure?
Well, I was mainly just thinking about, I mean, you're going to be the city of Genesee real fast.
Well, I, I get it.
And people, whether, you know, how that's going to work, because it's going to be a significant increase. I mean, you're probably looking at doubling it.
And keep in mind, all that five and a half million, even if the city does get some of it, they don't need it or all of it or seventy five percent. The city doesn't have to get all that money, just enough to meet whatever primary project they're trying to get. That's the first priority.
That's the cheapest one, though, it's five and a half million.
Those were greater for evaporative ponds, and recycled water use was way more expensive.
Yeah, recycled water use was twenty million and some change.
Now, the city of New Meadows just went to land use, didn't they?
I wasn't aware of that.
Seems like I heard something about that. I'm not sure, but like, the land use one was, I can't remember. Do you know, remember what the land use?
Whoa.
If we did land use instead, the cheapest one? It was at least double.
Well, the most expensive was twenty million, and the one before that was ten, so five, ten, twenty, pick one.
And that's a benefit, just the, the issue with Cambridge is guaranteed land, that amount of land to recycle all that water. The function is to get that amount of land. Area of land.
So anyway, the motion we're looking for is just to submit a letter of interest for grant funding.
There are some corrections that need to be made, though. Who's Luke McHenry?
That's what we found online. I can update that, that's what we found.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think maybe he works for the city of Weezer or Peet, but we've never had a Luke McHenry. I have my wastewater treatment one license.
Okay.
And my collections license is in process. I mean, the board has it right now, so.
We can update that.
Jeff Cook is still our, yeah, he's still our licensed operator and the backup.
All right, and we have his licenses too.
Yeah.
We can update that before we approve this amendment.
Yeah, and I just saw there was a typo on page three. Number two, it says next couple of months for formalizes.
Shouldn't be two, but.
Of that, that's all it's on.
Okay.
Well, and the council needs to, if they want to leave it twenty years or, or change it. I mean, the mayor's probably right, you know, as far as that is probably closer to the life of the system, but.
What is the difference in loan and bond payments?
Yeah.
And what, yeah, depends on what rate we get, if we get one.
Well, and like when you went through the audit, when I went to those, I mean, what we're paying right now, our water's a little bit more, but our water, we're paying four point two five percent interest on our sewer. One of the bonds is two point one two five, and the other is one point seven five. I don't think we're going to get those numbers this time. And our sewer fund is already hurting, even with those numbers.
Or I can bring my can, and we can just start kicking it down the road.
So we need to determine.
Can we present them? Ask for, how do you do that? Can you ask for two different years? Twenty or twenty, thirty or whatever?
Oh, in the L O I?
Yeah, it just says what's preferable. I mean, it doesn't lock you in, does it, Robert?
I, I would need to talk with one of the D E Q people to see whether those options are allowed.
Well, it's just a letter of interest, it's going to lock us into anything?
No, it doesn't lock you into anything.
Nope.
I mean, so we're just.
From my understanding with the multi-agency funding training that I went to, that the letters of interest are kind of a way for D E Q and the state and USDA and everybody to figure out what the needs are funding wise, and then they can have a, you know, better perspective on how to
Distribute what funds they have.
They do have. Instead of just waiting for applications to come in and go, hey, we're not going to fund that one, or not, so.
And it doesn't hurt the city to try this time, for example, on the water for the well number one rehab. The city applied for it twice, they didn't get it. Before, they were number eighty eight from the funding line, the second one, they're twenty five, so hopefully they, on this round, they move up. So every time you try, kind of like the Albert applications, you move up every time. Any one unsuccessful application.
And we only have five years to have everything done totally built and be in compliance.
Good news.
We just don't want, we just want to demonstrate to D E Q that the city thinks something, you know, you hit with that new compliance schedule.
The good news is, all of our terms will be up by then.
Mine too.
Hey, now.
And Corey will be last man standing.
It never worked that big, but whatever.
I don't know, I, you know, who's to say, maybe if we take such good care of our equipment that we can get it to last thirty years. But normally, when it's engineered, that's, they put a stamp on it that this is a twenty year program, and this system will need to be replaced in twenty years.
That's what's very common.
We just have residual carryover, and sooner or later, it's going to get us, because we're not keeping up.
And D E Q comes up with new departments.
Yeah, so. Anyway, I totally understand and respect the financial responsibility, but at the same time, sometimes I think you just gotta pony up because if you don't pony up now, you're gonna pony up later. But that's just my opinion. And my opinion doesn't count because I don't get a vote. So you guys let us know what you're thinking. Thanks. That's good. There's no end in sight.
And that 5.5 million again can be lessened based on the city's selected items because that consists of the wastewater collection system improvements up to Cemetery Road and the new treatment building that was suggested. And the new generator and the lift station pump replacements for both locations and the new treatment system. So it consists of all those elements. It could always be.
Yeah, I mean, it would be.
Sometimes you need two or more to go for it to be a system that works. So it can be lessened. Like the treatment system could go on without that, um, collection system improvements. The city just has to watch out for excessive flows and stuff like that.
Yeah, we'll leave that up to your side, man, because that's where they need to be done. Cemetery Road. They're only four years old up there.
Which four years old?
Sewer lines on Cemetery?
He said 40.
Oh, I thought he said four.
Four, 40.
Forty.
Four. I think I missed something. I gotta look better than my street. There's some asshole.
So we just need a motion for a letter of interest.
Yeah, and, and what timeframe you want to put on the loan that we're interested in, whether we do 20 years or 30 years, is that correct?
Yeah, I was just mentioning, it's, it's already in here as 20. So if that's what you want, you just make a motion how it is, but if you want to change that, then add that in there.
Let's just leave it the way, we're not set in stone, so.
Just a letter of interest.
Just leave it at 12.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I make a motion to, uh, approve the letter of interest for the wastewater treatment plan permit in DEQ.
With the change of the.
Does it change or share?
No, 20 years already in there.
No, no, I meant the one that he said, who's Luke McHenry?
Oh, change the name.
With the necessary changes.
What the necessary changes?
Okay, do I hear a second? Okay, it's been moved in second and all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, annual street financial report and report on resolution number R4-2023. Reserving forgone. And I guess Andrew's gonna tell us all about that.
Well, maybe I'll start with the last one first.
Right?
To do it. Um, here a few months ago, we did a resolution reserving $391 of forgone on property taxes because the county clerk had told me some values had changed and that we could reserve that. So I tried to do the paperwork. I mean, we did the public hearing and the resolution and everything and I sent the stuff to the, um, state tax commission. But I couldn't find a change in operating values when I sent it. But anyway, our forms still showed that we had $391 of forgone. But the state tax commission got back to me and said, no, you've already levied for your maximum levy, which I thought I had because I always try to pad the number just a little bit. So, because I don't know at budget time exactly what it's gonna come out as. Uh, so anyway, there was no forgone left according to the state tax commission. So I contacted the county clerk again and asked her, uh, I said, I never could figure this out. And she went back and looked at it. She says, I think I had a bad formula in my spreadsheet someplace that you're right, you've already levied that. So we went through that process kind of for nothing and she apologized.
Oh, just for fun.
Yeah.
Practice.
Well, it did cost us having to publish the public hearing and stuff, so anyway, not too much. But anyway, just so you know, there is no forgone. So next year when you're expecting forgone, there isn't any. Okay, on the annual street report, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Um, because we had a significant, um, local funding as far as what I had to put into from our funds in order to cover what we did, which was mainly engineering for some of our road projects. I had to put in $61,593 for the local funding. Um, transfer and basically why I wanted you to see that is that's basically everything you levy for property taxes. I think we got like 64 last year in property taxes. So if people ask you, why do you don't spending more on roads is, well, we basically spent everything we had on roads. And then our, our state funding and all the other funding, we got even the special funding and stuff was only about 27,852. So, um, any, anyway, I mean, that's a pretty high, uh, transfer, you know, locally and stuff that we had to do. But like I say, most of it was in engineering. $64,015 this year was spent in engineering for roads for professional services. You know, we only had 21,000 of routine maintenance and, um, you know, a lot less than we usually do, even though we chip sealed and stuff, being able to work with the county, we save a considerable amount of money. Um, the county's real, real good about working with us and only the, their cost. And a few things they've just done to be nice as well. So anyway, I don't know, does anyone have any questions?
I'm just thankful for the county. They saved us a ton of money.
And on the report, it shows, it doesn't show on what gets published in the paper and stuff, but it shows we chip sealed just barely over a half a mile of roads and we later ingated a little over two and a half miles, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Lane miles.
Yes, lane miles.
Okay. Anybody wanna be the? We got two alcohol permits. Make a motion on those. Item 11, approve alcohol beverage permits, 2024.
Do I need to do thi, can I do these both at the same time or do them separately? Make a motion to approve retail alcoholic beverage license for the office bar LLC for draft and bottled or canned beer consumed on premises and retail liquor by the drink.
Second. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve retail alcoholic beverage license to America's Rafting Company LLC for bottled or canned beer to be consumed on premises.
Second. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, approve written addendum to Washington County Hayfield lease, 6.15 acres for improvements of a road.
So this one's, I don't have the actual stuff on it yet. There's been some confusion. The Washington County Commissioners, Nate Marvin came and met with Corey and I about, uh, whether they could put a road down to the hayfield to have better access, uh, for RVs and things to park down there because they're expanding the fairgrounds up top. And those RVs won't be able to park there anymore.
And, and to keep from having to go through the rodeo grounds to get to that hayfield and just come down from that top part.
Yeah, they've been worried about a little bit of the safety issues and stuff with so many people doing that. So he came up and met with us because the city has a, through their property, the county's property at the top right by railroad that goes down five acres or so. I don't know.
It's not that much. I think it's like three and a half or so.
Anyway, they, they owned a little bit of acreage right at the beginning and they used to own, own the whole thing, but they owned the acreage at the beginning. And we have a permanent sewer easement that goes through, um, the whole piece of property. But when we leased out the hayfield, the 6.1 acres to them, um, what they, what Nate had told us is they had liked to not go along the road and because it's so steep up at the top to kind of go down through the middle of it a little bit better with a road. So I told them that, um, I need an addendum to the lease for you guys to consider and a sketch of that. And supposedly they had Delton Walker, the prosecuting attorney, draw one up and send it back to me, but I've never got it. It wasn't attached, but now Nate's out of town for a couple of weeks. Um, and then he talked about that, no, they wanted it along their, their right away, but I believe that's only for Washington County's property, not our property. So anyway, there's some confusion going on.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we have a perpetual easement for our sewer line. Where it comes down, our influent line comes down and we have a road right, I mean, it's, it's just a 10, 10-foot wide gravel road that comes down along the hayfield. And Nate and Jared were, well, we thought they were gonna come up and I was gonna meet with them to get an idea of what they were thinking, but I never got a call from them when they, if they did come up here to look at it, so.
And today I was told supposedly Jared's drawing up a, a sketch or something, but I'm still a little bit confused with the different messages I've got. But basically the addendum, I've told them that because a road would be an improvement or at least as any improvements become the property of the first party, you know, that they can't retain ownership of the road or, you know, we don't have to pay him for the road or anything if they put it in. So we needed some type of acknowledgement for that. So that'll probably come to you next month if we can get everything sorted out, but.
So in other words, we need to put this off until next month.
Yeah, but if anyone has any opposition at all about doing it, maybe we need to discuss it, you know?
Okay, I move that we put this item of the, uh, written addendum to the Washington County Hayfield lease, uh, for improvements of the road, uh, until next month.
Second.
Do you hear a second?
Yeah.
Can you second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13. It's been moved in second that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We gotta get Robert out of here. It's snow six inches deep already.
Is there much snow down below?
No, it's the same. It's just.
Maybe from Midville up?